Okay, meeting has ordered. O'Call?
Mr. Albro, Ms. Calderon.
Here.
Mr. Costa, Ms. Cawthorne.
Here.
Mr. Lombardi.
Here.
Mr. Luna.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Dunn.
Here.
President Gomez.
Here.
Hi, gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on my drive indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date time and place there posted in the Borough Hall and the New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the record when twin borough news. The board announces that under its long-standing policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by the members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public, the first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the board, but all comments will be considered. The board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked not to speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employer, the board, or any student.
Okay, so we have several presentations today. Are we going to start with the Winter Athlete Recognition?
Yes, and just for the record, the Department of Special Services is not presenting this evening. That was my error. That was actually pulled over from last year. I mistake. So, yes, we can. We can start with the Winter Athlete Recognition. Mr. Rickardelli.
Where am I standing?
Over here it's good. You can block me. You can block me. Come here. Yep. No, come here.
Wow.
Yeah, then turn around. That's fine. Face the camera. There you go. There you go.
All right, so it's my honor to be here tonight to present a special award to a special student athlete. With me tonight have Coach Matt Ulrich with me. Ray Cuttears unfortunately is on a trip to Holocaust. He couldn't be here tonight, but he did share some words that I'm going to read in a few seconds. If you've never been to wrestling down in Atlantic City, it is an event. Eight mats going at once, just to get there is incredible. And I got to see, I've been going since I started here, so it's whatever 13 years except for the COVID year, and it's just, it's an incredible event. Devin has been able to get there two years in a row now, and this year was obviously a very special year. Made it to the semifinals. It was an incredible run, and he managed to finish sixth in the state. So I'm going to, I'm going to read a little something from Coach Ray Cuttears. Over the past two years, Devin has been the embodiment of a student athlete in the Milford High School. Devin has ascended to the top of his field in athletics through grit, determination, hard work, and being incredibly coachable. This season, Devin was the Robin Leff Champion, the BCCA Champion, voted Most Outstanding Wrestler by the Bergen County Coaches. He was the district champion, regional finalist, and then he finished sixth at the state championships. He was voted First Team All Bergen County, First Team All North Jersey, and the NJIC Wrestler of the Year. Just as impressive, Devin has also ascended to the top of his field in academics. He has a 4.2 GPA, and he's currently taking four honors courses. The Milford community and obviously athletic department is incredibly proud of Devin and the young man he has become both on and off the mat. Congratulations, Devin Ronnie. Do you want to get one with the pork member?
Yes, yes.
Get in their page. Make them come on.
Mom and dad, make mom and dad jump.
Tim, why don't you come up? How about you guys come up too? Thanks, Mr. Dunn.
Of course.
And the other thing I want to add is he's only one of seven in Milford history to medal. Big state medalist.
So I hate to embarrass one of our students, but Joey.
Yeah.
So.
He just finished the track meet by the way.
How is he? You can, since you're here, I tend to indulge in the, try to indulge in the latest use of social media that the kids, you know, play with so that I feel like I'm connected and I understand like the lives of our teens. And I'm just flipping through my TikTok. And I find TikToks of you running all over the school, interviewing our athletes, our teachers, students. Tell us a little bit about this stuff, your little TikToks.
No, I'm just, I'm at the PA now.
Yeah.
Nobody recorded us.
Oh, wait, is something?
Wait, can you, are you willing to share? Are you willing? That was okay. Are you willing to share with us the name of your, the name of your account if people follow you?
So it was something like me and my friend Eva Chiselsa Jr., we started, we started a joke to be honest. We were in gym class, we got bored. We started, I switched it to 646 Media because that's the last video I ever did. I felt like I'd been involved in Milford more.
646 Media.
I don't know. I don't really know. Again, I kind of just started as a joke. We found it funny doing it during gym class. And then it kind of, people started liking the videos, so I kind of just got to gum. So then, yeah.
And now you've expanded it.
Yeah, and I'm glad that, I'm glad that you're doing it. It's a, it's a lot of fun to see.
And I appreciate it.
And also something, he started.
And something.
The Student Board of Representatives.
He's, I'm sorry.
He's one of the founding students of the student.
Student Board of Representatives.
Representatives. I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you were saying. Yes.
And he.
That's awesome. Yeah, that's awesome. Long story real. So, you know, we have a show going on in the high school this weekend. Are you aware of that? The musical?
Yes, so you know tomorrow.
Yeah, maybe you can get back there and like talk to, talk to some of the cast.
Behind the scenes.
Cast of the crew. Like, you know, like a little behind the scenes. There was a little drama going on in the drama department today. I don't know if you heard about it.
I don't know.
But well, he had a little ankle injury. So maybe you can go and like sniff it out and see.
I'll go figure out.
I'll go figure out what's wrong.
There'll be a video to speak about.
All right. So it's at 646 Media?
Yes, on TikTok. We also have an Instagram page.
Fantastic. Also, you can be found on Instagram. I just love it.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did see him trying to get a press cast at the wrestling match.
I asked about four times how I got it before. The closest I got was one of them telling me how to get it.
Maybe you and I, maybe you and I can talk about providing you with something that makes you a representative of the district if you're going out there and doing things like that for the district. Come visit me.
Okay. Did you know you were going to be at Paul?
Okay. That's great. Thank you. And congratulations.
And Joey and Sutter, I just have to say are.
Great, wonderful support.
Wonderful.
Wonderful.
But they're also part of the team that last year was the first team in school history to win the highest public county, get the county tournament.
Mm-hmm. They won the county. First time.
As county, for our, for our school level. And then this year, the first time for winning.
Since 14.
The Patriot, since 2014, winning the Patriot League for wrestling. So they were both.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So, our next. So we have Mr. and Mrs. Castranova, who are here on behalf of the foundation. Mr. Castranova, president of the New Milford Ed Foundation?
I did my job.
Yes, you did. You did. And I would like to thank you and the, and the members of the Gala Committee for a wonderful time. It was really a great evening. Thank you. Hi, Mr. Castranova. Did you want to share something with the other public?
Sure. First, I wanted to say thank you to all the teachers and administrators and everyone who came from the district to go to the gala. We raised, or we net-raised a little over $43,000.
Wow.
So it was our best year. With that said, we're going to do three scholarships this year, not two. We've just approved, I think it was 15 grants to the teachers throughout the district. We're opening up an investment account for the first time ever for the Ed Foundation, so hopefully we can keep this going for many more years to come. But from everybody from the board, I just wanted to say thanks. It was the best showing we had from the school district that night, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent of School Report.
Okay, so my first thing on my list was to thank the, the foundation for a wonderful time at the gala and to thank them also for the other donations that appear on the agenda for approval for next week. Tonight, we enjoyed for the first time since pre-COVID, the senior citizen dinner in the cafeteria, which precedes their free complimentary viewing of our dress rehearsal, which has been customary for many, many years, but came to a screeching halt with COVID. But this year, we started it up again, so really excited about that. So that is at seven, actually that's happening right now. And I just wanted to remind everybody that this year's Spring Musical, The Addams Family, opens tomorrow night and runs through Saturday evening at seven. And if you are interested in tickets, they are available at nmhsmusicals.com, or you can purchase them at the door. For those of you who follow us on Facebook, you might have seen a post. There is a blog, Ms. Tambucio, Mr. Cuttears.
There is a blog, Ms. Tambucio, Mr. Cutiers, and the students who are on the Holocaust Study Tour do maintain a blog the entire time that they're there. There's some blogging going on as well, and if you would like to take a look at that, it's holocauststudytour.com. Holocauststudytour.com. And it's also on our Facebook page. Each year, all of the school districts in New Jersey that have a high school and are members of the New Jersey School Boards Association recognize a member from a graduating class for the Unsung Heroes Award. So this year, Bergen County recognized unsung heroes from each of its high schools, and students who receive this award are recognized for academic, athletic, and artistic achievements. And the award is meant to honor students who go above and beyond without looking for any sort of recognition or material awards. And this year's, this year's honoree from New Milford is Maria Preiger. I would like to congratulate and provide, you know, my thanks and well wishes to two recently identified retirees. Josephine Felice and Lorraine Iacano-Golden are two instructional assistants who will be retiring in June. So we will recognize retirees and Teachers of the Year at the June meeting. Tomorrow was supposed to be Coffee with the Super and Friends, but it's just going to be Coffee with Friends, because the Super is going to be at The Addams Family. So I had a special guest attend each of these meetings, and Dr. Perro and Heather Gilgallin, our supervisor of Special Services, had prepared for tomorrow night, but I picked these nights before we changed the day of the show. And they wanna talk to public about autism awareness and other special education updates, so we didn't wanna cancel. So they will be there in my absence dazzling you with whatever, all the good stuff that's going on in special ed. And I will send out, as I always do, a blast with a link to parents. And that's at 7:00 PM tomorrow. Berkeley School, March's Character of the Month was Compromise. Berkeley would like to recognize the students who found a way to compromise with friends. In kindergarten, Ava Jaeger-Kondan; in first grade, Joel Aitken; second grade, Sophia Gibbs; third grade, Jack Coches; fourth grade, Nathan Prins; fifth grade, Irish Adnan. Berkeley School partnered with Hackensack Awareness Regional Program Health Educator Michaela Chu, who came to Berkeley to teach a program called Community Helpers to all kindergarten, first, and second grade classes. Happy for the partnerships that we have in Bergen County. Community Helpers is a course designed for elementary school students to learn the importance of a community helper and to meet some of Hackensack Meridian's EMTs. Along with a short program on what a community helper is, how they can be one, and times to call 911, the students got the opportunity to meet the EMTs, ask questions, and tour the pediatric hospital. At David Owens, congratulations to our March Nightly Values winner, Christopher Kelly. Congratulations to Ashley Waldron on our eighth grade, our eighth grade student who was nominated and accepted to participate in Tech Trek this year. Tech Trek is a one-week summer camp designed to make STEM fields exciting and accessible to girls in middle school, the age when girls' participation in these fields statistically drops. For many girls, a leave-long camp sparks their curiosity and places them on a path towards success. We had a tight faculty versus eighth grade basketball game this year. That's because I didn't play. The teachers were victorious, but it was only a three-point margin. Once again, fun was had by all. Our students were fortunate enough to hear the story of Stephen Hill and his long road to recovery. Very powerful performance. Once again, DEO would like to thank the, thank...
The Municipal Alliance.
Municipal Alliance. I always, I'm like, I'm looking at the map, and I'm like, why is that? Yeah, the Municipal Alliance for supporting these wonderful programs. The kids absolutely loved it. The Spectrum Thrive Club created a school-wide day of silence to represent and stand up for those who feel like they do not have a voice. Ms. Escrow and Ms. Simmons collaborated with their eighth grade classes to celebrate Earth Day and the International Chinese Language Day. This included a livestream into a panda park in China, as well as cultural activities. And artwork was centered around climate change and endangered species. It's amazing how they integrate the content areas to make, to make these things happen. At the high school, we'd like to congratulate the High School Students of the Month for March. Ninth grade, Michaela Morgan; and tenth grade, Valeria Odonias; eleventh grade, Hunter Riesus? Riesus? And in twelfth grade, Casia Rivera. Students visited the Gallery, the Gallery Bergen to view the work of artist and children's book author, illustrator Faith Ringgold. Students made artwork in a workshop as a reflection after learning about Ringgold's life and artwork. They discussed the Harlem Renaissance and celebrated the many accomplishments of Ringgold as a prolific African-American female artist. This was such a unique experience for the students to be up close with a large body of work of this caliber in their own private viewing. We're thankful to Timothy Blanc, Director of the Gallery Bergen, for giving our students this incredible experience, it's a beautiful show. Thanks to Ms. Venizia and Ms. Morel for making the trip possible. Ms. Ortega, our Spanish teacher and Honor Society advisor, conducted a pulsera fundraiser to assist those in Central America. They sold 146 pulseras, which are bracelets, and raised over $1,071 for the cause. We'd like to congratulate the members of the Spanish Honor Society and the students who volunteered to make it possible. Ms. Kerschner and Ms. Torpe collaborated, I'm sorry, Mrs. Kerschner, no, Mrs. Torpe, collaborated with their respective Mandarin and Biology classes to celebrate Earth Day and the International Chinese Language Day as well. This included the same thing, a livestream into a panda park in China. Congratulations go to Ryan Hartum on his 100th career wrestling victory last month. Great honor to join the Century Club. The Student Athletes of the Month for March are, Student Athletes of the Month for March are Kaylee Babino for softball and Andy Avilas for baseball. How nice, how nice, she deserves it. Okay, great. She's so nice. Congratulations from Mr. Castronovo, Kaylee. Some upcoming announcements. This Saturday is our eighth annual Pediatric Cancer Softball Classic at DEO. There will be eight games throughout the day, with New Milford playing at 3:00 PM versus Luda. The Annual Athletic Dinner is June 14th at McAlusso's in Hawthorne. The Hall of Fame Class of 2023 has been announced. Ally Hansen, A.J. Scopa, Will Walsh, Kristy Victory, Pat and Tom Maggie, 2013 Girl Soccer Team, and 1998 Wrestling Team. Thank you to the Hall of Fame Committee. The dinner is set at McAlusso's, must be a hot spot, on November 20th, so that's in the fall. Don't forget that the Annual Golf Outing should be in your calendar for June 26th. After-school is out at Rockley Country Club. And lastly, special thanks to our Browns crew for all their hard work on the fields, getting us ready for spring, and especially in anticipation of Saturday's events for softball. In the Technology Department, we'd like to welcome Michael Marr, who started with us on Monday, and special thanks to Matt Coachella for filming this evening, stepping in for Dan while he does all things Addams. And that, I believe, is the end of our clip.
Any question?
I do wanna make a point. Earlier on, you said, um, the Community Helpers with Hackensack Medical Center. I believe Michaela Chu is a graduate of New Milford.
Oh, okay.
Right? Yeah, she's a graduate of New Milford.
Oh, good. It's so nice when I come back.
2013 event. 2013 event.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you, come on back.
Taylor.
This is a stalker. Stalker. I do. You know, I was so excited about all the good news that I forgot about the mandatory. Wait, that I had the mandatory recording to do. Oh, here's the yucky stuff. Okay, suspension recorder. Okay, at the high school, we had a combination, three incidents, okay? Verbal, physical altercation with another student, that was a combined duo. And then assault or threats towards another student. So we had a combination of, we had three events with a total of seven days of out-of-school suspension. At the middle school, we had a combination of, a total of five events. Unfortunately, theft, three incidents of misconduct, and one HIV, with a total of four days of in-school suspension and four days of out-of-school suspension. Uh-oh, we're getting young. Berkeley, two incidents. One was an inappropriate contact, the other was a confirmed HIV. Two days of in-school suspension and two days of out-of-school suspension. And Gibbs had none. Gibbs had none. Okay. Okay. For HIV, month of March, New Milford High School, two cases brought to the building principal for review. Neither of those cases were forwarded for a full investigation in accordance with the principal's preliminary determination and my agreement. They were treated as code conduct. David Owens, three were brought to the building principal for review. All three were forwarded for full on investigation, and two were confirmed as bullying, and one was unfounded. Gibbs, none. Berkeley, none. I need to fix this. Because... Yeah, there's one. I need to, I need to fix this. So there is one.
At Berkeley?
At Berkeley. At Berkeley, Gibbs has none.
So it was on the suspension?
Mm-hmm, because it was on the suspension, let's say.
Go up to the principal, Gordon.
One, it should be one, and one, and then confirmed. It might not have just been closed out and the HIV system something's happened. Okay. That's it. And now that's really it. Thank you.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Report, Lauren O'Dawsta.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't really have a report this evening, but just a reminder that we are entering testing season. We will be doing the NJSLI, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. We have AP testing taking place in the high school. So just a reminder to encourage good self-care practices, getting to bed on time, having a healthy breakfast, and, you know, it'll be a busy next month or so, I would say through the end of May. And I know that the principals had emailed detailed schedules for each of the buildings and included details as to which groups of students will be testing. So if you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to your child's teacher for more information.
Thank you. Is there somebody sharing a report? Stephanie Couture?
I'm the conference person. Good evening. Yes, I have a report this evening. Thank you. First, I would like to start off by thanking the Bergen Field Board of Education for lending us one of their 30 passenger buses. We have some streets in town that one of our buses couldn't access, and our smaller bus is in for service. I'm not sure on the timeline on that, but just really thankful that they were able to lend us one of their buses. We did give them keys to one of our buses, should they need it. So it's still on our property, I'm not sure that they used it to this point, but that we've been using their bus since Monday morning, transportation. And then I just wanted to let the board know that we are working to submit the required documentation for the supplemental stabilization aid. And for those of you that don't know, that was Senate Bill Number 3732, supplemental stabilization aid, which is available to districts identified in that legislation. This is to receive the stabilization aid, as detailed, a school district must submit to the Commissioner of Education a request that identifies the items to which the aid will be used, and to explain how the district will fund the operations in future years in which the district does not receive the stabilization aid or similar supplemental stabilization aid. And so the total amount that we are going to receive is $397,496. And that is only for the 23, 24 school year.
I can just add to that. So at first, the directions were that we could use the aid, but that it was not to be used for recurring costs such as salaries. And in the application, salaries are not listed in the table for what you're going to spend the money on. Then we received follow-up information from the county that said that the money was exactly for the purpose of helping districts who had to make difficult staffing decisions because of the cut in state aid, and that we should be considering it for salaries. And so Stephanie and I went back to the budget in an attempt to try to see what we could preserve. But then when she went in to actually fill out the form, there isn't a line for salaries. There is a line for other, but we need to find out exactly what still is possible, because we immediately shifted gears. We said, okay, if we can't use it for salaries, these are the things that maybe we cut that we needed to address, so we'll create that list. And then we got the list about, no, 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 you should address it. And so we shifted gears and we revised the list, and then went to apply. And so we are still a little bit unsure as to how that's going to really roll out. And, you know, we really need to be, we want to be able to tell the public by Tuesday. So, but you know where we are with that. We don't really have a definite list, we have two lists.
And just to follow up, I do have a county meeting tomorrow morning with all the Bergen County VAs. However, we're only one of three districts, and we are the highest that was cut and the highest that's gonna get back. So there's only two other VAs who are dealing with this, but the county VA should be there. And so I hope to get a more definitive answer, and then I will report back at next week's meeting. And that concludes my report. Unless you have anything else.
Hey, I have a question on that. So, next week's meeting is when we present the budget. So for us, we had conversations leading up to this. It's how we know what that change will be beforehand for that meeting?
We may not know, because that change and that application is not part of the general budget. So the general budget will be presented.
It goes forward as we...
It goes forward as it has, as you approved it. And then that application is a separate application. So if we have the answers on Tuesday, then we will add a slide, and we'll explain to you where we are with that, and that's a separate approval.
Okay.
And if we don't, we will present the budget as is.
The discussions that we had in executive session. Is there anything that you'll be able to tell us that we need to have an executive session before that meeting? Or is it information that will be public?
So when you're talking about any changes, that will be, it has to be public?
Okay. Well, I didn't know at that time it was.
Okay. It will be public until next week.
Can I just follow up? Paige was asking, so I just wanna make sure that I understand it. So on Tuesday, we may not know the answer to that question. So, it is possible, or I don't know the words here, is it possible that the budget that we presumably approved on Tuesday, that when we get a better understanding of the aid, if it's after Tuesday, that there may be staffing decisions that could change after that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's not a lot, because, because understand this.
Because I understand this too. So, you know, with staffing is also benefits and you don't want to... We don't want to put ourselves in a position where a year from now... This is really just a Band-Aid and a year from now, we're dealing with the same issue. It has to be a long-term solution. So... And it's not a lot of money. You know, it sounds like a lot of money, but when it comes to business and schools announcements, it's not really a lot of money.
Can I just, if I can get to that quickly?
Yeah.
The way that it's... Not to get too much into the financials, but the way that we're receiving it is we're not appropriating anything. So the budget would remain as is and we actually will, I believe, be receiving the money prior to June 30th of this year. And it's going to be in the audit program at the close of June 30th and fall into surplus for next year.
Correct.
So it's nothing that needs to be appropriated.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, just selfishly for negotiations committee, it is just for the 2324 school year. So it is not something that...
It's a one-time...
And we have to explain how we would be able to fund, like, say, salary moving in other areas.
Correct. Which we really wouldn't have an answer for because costs just go up. So unless we had an increase in aid, we wouldn't have an answer for that.
Right. And there's no guarantee we'd get it and then...
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Any liaison board committee reports? No? Any correspondence?
Yes.
That's good.
boundance.
Yes, it was the... I sent it to you all already. It was the invitation for the Memorial Day Parade and responses to Mrs. Minko. Please.
If we're going to walk. I guess I just want to bring up if we are going to walk. I know last year we got shirts. The new members will get shirts for that too if they're going to walk. Just, we can discuss that elsewhere. Okay.
Because you want a shirt.
Do you already have the shirts?
No, we only ordered it for the people who were on so Nicole could get additional ones.
Only Nicole has got the shirts. Yeah, we didn't.
Oh, goofy. And you said you were going.
So we can discuss who's going and we can ask Nicole to get additional orders for shirts. Okay. Agenda items for discussion. Review the tentative agenda for the regular meeting to be held on April 25th. Any questions regarding the review of board action or comments? No? Okay. Any questions or comments for educational programs and curriculum? Any questions or comments regarding personnel recommendations? Any questions or comments regarding finance and facilities? Jocelyn?
So 2223 dot 170. It talks about damaged leg press and basketball score table. I see that later on, Mr. Riccadelli has donated new leg presses for the fitness center. I don't know if that's him or the department, but that's right. Since it does a damaged leg press machine that has to be disposed of. So it looks like we're getting a leg press machine to replace that. I think so.
We are. And it's... I don't think it's... The foundation has donated...
The foundation paid for the leg press.
Yeah, paid for the leg press. Like, Mr. Riccadelli didn't get it. The foundation.
So in 2223 dot 190, number 13, it says Mr. Riccadelli moved to high school new leg press for fitness.
Approval of educational grants from the New Milford Education Foundation. One of which is...
Like, he applied for it and they honored it. If you look at the introductory line there, Mr. Luna, at 190, it's approval of donations of the following grants.
Oh, from New Milford.
Yep, for the value of $20,000. And it's all items inclusive of 1 through 16.
Okay, so that actually wasn't my question. That question was the other one. Basketball score table.
Yes.
Are we getting a new score table? Did we get one? Did we have another one? Is that something we need to address at some point for disposing of? I mean, I guess we had this one for next year, but...
I am not sure. When we met with the Athletic Committee, a basketball score table was not on the list of things that we needed officially.
So we just find out if it's something...
Yeah, just maybe we have a lot of time till basketball season. But just to keep it in mind that if it isn't another one, then we... You don't have to run to next year.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or comments regarding athletics and co-curricular?
Well, can we just thank Jeff Wood? Not a joke, who donated lumber. Not a joke. Jeff Wood from Cukin Brothers Company for the set building material of lumber in the amount of approximately $2,500 to the musical. Really appreciative of that.
All the donations.
And all the donations. Yep.
What a commitment to that name.
Sound great? Yep.
Any questions or comments regarding policy?
Yes. Okay. And more... Not a question, well, I guess a question, whatever. For P4215 and P3211, they both are Code of Ethics.